And I'll just say briefly before we get started is I made the decision yesterday afternoon to go to Zoom because the possibility of freezing rain tonight and now that we have the Zoom possibility, there's no reason to take any chances of anybody been out there. So that's what we're doing. And secondly, kind of by by chance and somewhat by design, there's not much on our meeting tonight. So I don't think it's gonna be a very long meeting at all. Thank you all for being here. We'll call the order at six thirty two in this superintendent will call the roll for the quorum.
Lauren Andrews.
Yes, here.
Carol Bachofner.
Here.
Brad Hoyt.
Here.
Paul Coster.
Yeah.
Jesse Davis.
Here.
Mark Lewis.
Here.
Kelly McKennel.
Here.
Sarah Post.
Yeah.
Rebecca Rovetto.
Here.
And Jason White.
Here.
And I also see that our two student representatives are here with us tonight. Thank you, ladies for attending. We have a full house.
All right, great. Thank you. John, if you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Just to add a brief report from Stephanie Tribbo, our assistant superintendent, and we're removing the executive session from tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Public participation. Don't see any. And then consent agenda, if there are no objections, the minutes will be approved as written. Moving on to reports, then report of the superintendent.
My report is very brief tonight. Just we we had our first meeting of the budget committee and I won't steal Kelly's standard by reporting on that, but just to say that there was a great meeting. Max gave a very good overview of the budget process and we talked about some areas of focus and some goals for the committee for the year. That was, I think, very positive. One of the things that the committee asked Max and I to look at was the cost of running our own pre K program and we're doing that. Interestingly, I just got notice that a draft bill regarding universal pre K for main public schools is being introduced. I don't have much more information for you tonight other than that. But we will be looking at that with the committee. Next week is the main school superintendent's winter convocation and I expect that along with some other legislation will be quite a topic for discussion. So I think our look at pre K is very timely. Other than that, I don't have anything else from my report tonight.
Good. Any questions for John tonight?
John, are there things that we could do proactively, assuming that we're all aligned philosophically about having a pre K in our our district? Things that we can start thinking about now or preparing that would help us get a step ahead?
Yep. So there are a couple of things. I think the first thing to do is be very, very well informed about the cost of pre K. So Max has actually worked up some cost estimates for the budget committee. The budget committee will be looking at that. And to share with the board, the good thing as far as our position for pre K is we have space. We have space at South School for classrooms and we actually have an extra classroom that's designed for pre K over at Ash Point. So we're in really good shape in terms of that. We're also in good shape in terms of materials and things like that, that we own furniture and that type of thing. So I think the main thing for us is just to be very well informed about the about what the local cost of the program could be. And then, of course, the benefits of pre K.
Okay. Anything else for John? All right. Saying then, that's a report of the assistant superintendent, Stephanie.
All right. Hello, everybody. My report is also fairly brief. There's a little bit of a theme to it. And that theme is community. So December is a short month in the office because of the holiday break and I took some time off as well. So that was wonderful. But it was a short, but but a busy month. So it seemed that at the beginning of the month, the biggest push was trying to get the grant application for the juvenile grant completed. And that was based on what I shared with this group the last time that I did a presentation, which I think was in November and my presentation was called Grants Galore. And I had mentioned that we were pursuing a grant under LD seven fifty six where I think it was Valley Geiger had mentioned at a meeting that there was a million dollars that was available for supporting juveniles, especially through restorative practices across Maine. So we have filled out an application for that and got it in on time. And the community piece of that was I'm I'm really proud of the process. A meeting was called initially by some community stakeholders and that's where we learned about LD seven fifty six and from there RSU thirteen called additional meetings and we had a partnership from Home Help Hope, the Landing Place, Main Health, Main Prosecutorial District Six and the Rockland Police Department and and then several members of the RSU as well. So that was a great collaboration. I'm excited about the projects we should hear about grant awards in the middle of January. So I'm hoping that the next time that I give a presentation, I'll be presenting some very good news. My fingers are crossed. The other community piece that I wanted to mention was our music community across the district. I've been able to and John has attended some of these as well. The TGS Winter Performance, the Winter Music Performance, Oceanside High School Music Performance. I was able to get to a couple of the songs at the South School Performance. They held theirs in the evening, which was nice. The auditor, the the gym at South School was completely packed. There was pretty much standing room only. It was amazing. And I was also able to make it to the Ash Point music presentation and the music is phenomenal. And I think probably if there's was a subject area that was the most impacted by the COVID protocols, it was music. And I know the music teachers were lugging chairs outside, placing them fourteen feet apart at first. They have put a lot of of time and effort into keeping the music programming going across the district and I was just really proud. Everything that I heard was fantastic. There was a lot of energy, a lot of creativity. And that high school band, Mark, you probably can agree because I think you've been supporting them for several years now with the trumpet, but they have come such a long way. It's incredible that even despite everything that's happened with COVID, it just was a great performance. I was blown away. I felt like I was listening to Portland Symphony Orchestra. It was great. So I want to commend the music teachers. Their creativity and energy are endless. The day before the holiday break, I was able to get into the middle school and another little theme here with community. It was great to see the eighth graders cheering each other on. They were using these Sphero balls in the classroom and having them go over bridges that they had made. They were all cheering each other on and having a great time. So that was really fun to watch. And then they were doing cookie decorating that they had baked and prepared in Ms. Sally's classroom. And Ms. Sally invited me and she said, come on in, why don't you decorate a cookie with us? And it was so great to sit there with the students decorating cookies. They were giving me tips and pointers on, you know, using a a paperclip to get some of the really fine detail of the decorating and it just, it was a really nice moment at the middle school that I wanted to share with you guys. And then finally, this was also right before the break. Our life skills class at the high school has traditionally done performance and they put together some skits. Usually it's done in front of a whole audience of students and for the past couple of years that hasn't happened. And this year, the auditorium was nearly full. A bunch of students were were watching the skits, but I don't think that the students were quite prepared for that. I think that they were told that it wasn't going to be in front of a large group. I think there was a little miscommunication there. So it was a little bit of a surprise for the students, but they did a great job. The performers did incredible. It's a way for them to practice some of their their listening and speaking and it's a really great interaction with some of the other theater students. And at the very end, there was a standing ovation from the group of students that were watching their peers perform on stage. And that was a really heartwarming moment because I think going back to that idea of community, we've lost some of that during COVID. We've lost some of those get togethers and celebrations and gatherings. And as they start to come back, those traditions of supporting each other and some of those really deep roots have not been lost in our district. So that was wonderful to see. And then I'll just close out by saying how much I appreciate seeing your faces at some of these events. I've seen so many of you at the high school play or high school music performance or middle school Veterans Day gathering and it just it's great. And the high school, I've seen a couple of you at either high school workshops that have been taking place or the high school gathering right before the holiday break, there was a breakfast and it just, you guys are part of the the school culture and community as well. So when you're involved, that really makes a big difference. So thank you. I appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Stephanie? All right. Thank you. Seeing that Max report of the business manager.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you. No.
Looks like Max has got some technical difficulties there, Lauren.
Is this working?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. There you go. Sorry. You would think after two years of Zoom that I would figure out all the microphones, but I haven't all figured out yet. So I'm was hoping to present something, but I'm also having other technical difficulties connecting to our server. So I'm just going to give you guys a brief update on FY twenty two versus FY twenty three expenditures so far. And we're looking pretty good overall from a budget standpoint and expenditure standpoint. We had a great first meeting with the budget committee. Thanks to everybody that was involved in that first call and looking forward to next week's meeting, but so far through period six, sorry, I keep on reverting back to periods in business world and periods are are months. So we just concluded period six for the fiscal year. So we're about halfway through. When I take a look at the budget and where our expenditures are, we're looking pretty good. So right now FY twenty two, which was last year, at the same time, we were about fifty one percent expended for the entire budget. For FY twenty three, we're sitting at about forty seven right now, forty seven point seven. So round up to forty eight. So we are a little bit less than we were last year in terms of overall spend for the year. The biggest outliers that I am seeing right now are admin costs and a little bit on the transportation side, but I think when we take a look at all of the articles, we're still going to be at about two and a half, three percent under expended for the year. So we're in a good place. You know, there's a lot of questions that could be asked as to which article is being overspent or underspent, but when you take a look at it holistically, we're doing better this year than we were last year in terms of overall expenditures and being mindful of our money. We do have FY twenty two's audit scheduled for tomorrow and Friday. So that's an onsite audit with RHR Smith, who are our accounting auditors that also you know, deliver the overall sort of financial big picture to the DOE to make sure that we are in compliance across the board with our accounting practices. So hopefully they can make it up tomorrow and we can get this beyond us and we can put that in our rearview mirror and just close out the FY twenty two books and focus on the remainder of the year, but that's you know, to be determined. We'll make a call tomorrow morning as to whether they can get here. We did get an extension and were granted an extension from the DOE just from my relative lack of tenure and whatnot. There were a number of considerations that we asked them to give us an extension through February twenty eighth and they granted it. So really no big concern on my part. We're going to close these books and we're going to get it done and you know, hopefully learn whatever we can learn from the auditors. So us being at about forty seven point seven percent, we're, you know, when I take a look at our baseline target, we should be about forty nine percent. So we are like two percent under where we should be, which is a good thing with six months left in the school year. So Articles one, two and nine are really looking good and that's general regular instruction, special ed and maintenance. We're trending a few basis points under on each article. So that's great. We are focusing as a central office team on making sure our accounts receivable are up and that we are actually receiving money that we are invoicing for every federal grant and other grant. Grant scholar, thank you Stephanie for us, you know, having this this work to do, but we do have about six hundred thousand dollars in accounts receivable that we are trying to get into our books, but we're at the mercy of the DOE actually approving those invoices and supporting documents. So my main focus for the next two months is really to get a consistent invoicing schedule and practice amongst our five person central office team to make sure that you know, we can actually get a regular invoicing and receivable schedule on the books for the second half of the year. Then it it really depends on the grant. Some grants allow you to invoice multiple months at a time. Some only allow you to invoice and then you have to wait for the approval after they review the supporting documents. So for special education grants, there are pretty much you have to wait for the approval before you can invoice the next month. And we have a little bit of catch up to do, but we'll we'll catch up pretty soon here. On the transportation and facilities side, we did have CMP on site yesterday to install the three phase for our fast charging station for the EV school bus. We do have an AC charger that will charge our EV school bus, which is set to be delivered on the eighteenth and that charge is going to take about ten hours to get a full charge on that bus. So really, we need to get through the CMP site work and our electrical site work to get the fast charging station up, which will allow us to apply for additional EV vehicles to add to our fleet in FY twenty four, FY twenty five. So I'm excited about that. You know, we have the first one that we're going to test out on some local routes, but really, we can't even get it on the road until we get it delivered and we get that AC charging station done. So CMP's, you know, arrival yesterday, like five months after my first request to be there was a great step in the right direction. And I'm hoping we'll be able to get that bus on the road by the twentieth of this month. Cushion Community School, we do have the PFAS issue where we're still serving students bottled water. We needed to get some remediation equipment up inside the rafters in Cushion Community. There was some concern about the structural integrity of that space. So we had to actually engage a structural engineer to make sure that the remediation equipment that we were looking to put in could be supported by the healing that was existing there. So we did get the green light from the structural engineer that it could support the proposed remediation process and we're going to move forward with that. So Cushion Community should have PFAS free water, hopefully by mid February. And then the only other thing that I had was the EV bus delivery on the eighteenth requires some local first responders to be in attendance for safety training, you know, with EV batteries. There are some fire concerns. We wanted to make sure that Rockland, Cushing, Thomaston, all the fire departments and police departments were aware of how to handle a emergency situation. So I've got their commitments to be there on the eighteenth and we should be ready to go to, you know, get a green school bus on the road. So that's sort of exciting and I'll look for opportunities to see where we can add to the fleet once we get that one going. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Max? Yes, Mark.
Mark, go ahead. I was wondering who's running the safety discussion with the first responders for the school buses that the company.
That would be that would be in charge technologies. They actually have the EV charging stations that we're going to be putting in place. So they're coordinating and facilitating all the training.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Max? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Max. Appreciate that. Report of the board chair. I'm not going to say anything this time around purposely, except for this is RSU thirteen, where we love our staff. We love our kids and we are awesome together. Moving on then to the business items to business eight, A to acknowledge the resignation of Diane Pussi, school psychologist effective January thirteen, two thousand twenty three. Is there a motion? Mark and second by Carol, any discussion? Seeing none and thanking her for her service to our school district superintendent will call the roll.
Lauren Andrews.
Yes.
Carol Bachofner.
Yes.
Brad Hoyt.
Yes.
Paul Coster.
Yes.
Jesse Davis.
Yes.
Mark Lewis.
Yes.
Kelly McKennel.
Yes.
Sarah Post.
Yes.
Rebecca Rovetto.
Yes.
And Jason White.
Yes.
Thank you.
You want to get the students as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Winter.
Yes.
And now I'm going to embarrass be the embarrassing. I'm blanking on your first name.
Jillian.
Jillian, thank you. Memory banks not working. Thank you, Jillian.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to HB to approve the appointment of Michael Brown, grade five teacher, Cushing Community School. Is there a motion? Carol and the second, Kelly. John, I think you're pretty chuffed on this new teacher. You want to describe?
I'm going to do better than that because Michael's on the call.
Oh, right there.
Needless to say, we're very excited about Michael coming on board as the the fifth grade teacher and at Cushion Community School. And I'll let Michael introduce himself to the board. Thank you for joining us, Michael.
Hi, thank you for letting me join tonight. Just wanted to put a face to a name and introduce myself. So I've been an elementary teacher for about eighteen years. Started my career in the United States before moving up to Canada. Now I'm coming back to the US, primarily taught grades three through six. Many different settings, urban, rural, and I'm looking forward to getting to know the families and the students of the community. So good evening and nice to meet everybody.
Great to meet you as well, Michael, and very, very glad to have you aboard. It's fantastic. It's fantastic with the experience that you have and the dedication you have as well as coming to us mid year when when sure, your role is very, very, very much needed. So thank you so much. And thanks for coming out, joining us tonight and in the call. Thank you. All right. So we will any other discussion? If not, we will have the roll call from the superintendent.
Lauren Andrews.
Yes.
Carol Bachofner.
Yes.
Brad Hoyt.
Yes.
Paul Coster.
Yes.
Jesse Davis.
Yes.
Mark Lewis.
Yes.
Kelly McKennel.
Yes.
Sarah Post.
Yes.
Rebecca Rovetto.
Yes.
Jason White.
Yes.
And Winter.
Yes.
And Jillian.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Welcome, Michael. All right. To undertake a first reading of policy ADF school district commitment to learning results. Jason, do you have a motion?
Yes, I motion to approve.
All right. And second.
Second.
Sarah. All right. Any discussion on this? So go ahead and in the vote. All right, super. Go ahead, John.
I'll just say this is so we did a review of required policies and for one reason or another, don't ask me what the reason was. We didn't have this one. Very basic policy.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, superintendent will call the roll.
Lauren Andrews.
Yes.
Carol Bachofner.
Yes.
Brad Hoyt.
Yes.
Paul Coster.
Yes.
Jesse Davis.
Yes.
Mark Lewis.
Yes.
Kelly McKennel.
Yes.
Sarah Post.
Yes.
Tucker Rovetto.
Yes.
Jason White.
Yes.
And Winter.
Yes.
And Jillian.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is policy IHBGA homeschooling participation in school programs. Jason, you.
Yes. Yes, I motioned that we approve this for first reading.
All right. Thank you. Second. Jesse, thank you. I noticed this was a really, you know, long policy that we're looking at. I assume this is something that we get from the attorneys and we need to modify for ourselves for our own purpose or so.
Yes, it was templated.
Templateed.
Templateed from the association.
Good.
This also required policy and we have IHBG. We did not have IHBGA and I think the next meeting, we might want to look at the template for IHBG because MMSA separates out the homeschool law from the homeschool participation policy, but this is participation.
Okay. Any questions?
Seeing none. Sorry if I made you start. It's really more of an observation, but you know, John, it's by disposition is very welcoming policy towards this community, which I commend you for sort of leading that for leading that. But I guess the question I've got is how does, how do we let that sort of those constituents know of it?
My intent, I would actually like to have a section on our website with a little introduction by me about our sort of attitude and welcoming attitude toward homeschool students. And that also can be distributed through the schools' school handbooks and on their websites as well. So I think it's, I think it's an area that we need to do a little work on as far as PR. But certainly we already have the philosophical attitude toward the homeschool students. We, you know, we, we love to have them participate at whatever level they would like to, whether it's auditing a class, taking a class, participating in sports or other activities, theater, whatever. So I I would agree. It's it's a good. I, I would agree. It's, it's a good policy and it's also our philosophy to welcome those, those kids.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, the superintendent will call the role.
Lauren Andrews.
Yes.
Carol Bachofner.
Yes.
Brad Hoyt.
Yes.
Paul Coster.
Yes.
Jesse Davis.
Yes.
Mark Lewis.
Yes.
Kelly McCannell.
Yes.
Sarah Post.
Yes.
Rebecca Rovetto.
Yes.
Jason White.
Yes.
And Winter.
Yes.
And Jillian.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Um, nine communications, please.
I do have one tonight. Uh, Plants Unlimited. Let me get there. Um, you may have seen if, if you're actually on Facebook or out and about that Plants Unlimited actually donated Christmas trees and had them available for the public. Um, the one value I have was for Oceanside Middle School was seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. But they also donated to Oceanside High School and South School. So public, the public was free to come pick up a tree if they wanted one. Which is a really nice thing.
John, can I add to that as well?
Go ahead.
The, um, middle school accepted plants for inside of the school to help sort of jazz up the, the entrance way and the, um, uh, the administrative office when you first enter. So it looks really beautiful. So that was a really kind donation. Um, so it was, it was not only the, the Christmas trees. Um, like the ones that were provided at South School, the high school and the middle school, but the middle school also was provided with plants for indoor use.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, John?
Nope.
All right, great. And thanks Plants Unlimited for their donation to our district. Very generous of them. Um, moving on to committee reports, um, curriculum and technology.
Well, my report's easy. We didn't meet. So, um, we didn't, um, do anything brilliant and we didn't get in trouble. So, um, I think we're at a break even point there and I just wanted to say as we start this new year off, how much I personally appreciate the members of the committee and especially Stephanie for her hard work in our curriculum areas. We meet again on the twenty-third of January by Zoom or I guess we're still in Zoom. Um, and we meet at three fifteen.
All right. What, what, what's the date again?
January twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay. And that's because it's the twenty-third in this month, but it's typically the third, third, third Monday.
We just decided that that worked out better.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Um, student engagement task force are, we did not meet, um, since the last time I reported. Our next meeting is Monday, uh, February sixth at three PM, um, budget committee.
Uh, we did meet, but without me. So I'm going to let, I know, uh, Max talked a little bit about it and John, uh, Max and I were able to meet um, ahead of time, um, but I'm glad to hear that it was, it went well. So I'll let somebody else add more details.
Yeah, I felt it was a good meeting. I, we outlined what our you know, priorities were, and I think we're still defining those. So when we meet next week, we'll talk a little bit more about pre-K and some other facilities. You know, goals that we had. I know that's a separate, um, task force, but, um, you know, it was good meeting. Our next meeting is next Tuesday at six fifteen PM. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, policy communications.
Yes, um, our last meeting was great. We met on December eighth. Uh, we discussed two policies which you saw tonight and tabled one, which was GCFBR recruiting and hiring of administrative staff administrative procedure. And, um, we tabled it to take a more in-depth look at it. We are planning to meet on January twelfth at six thirty. Uh, we will review the table policy and others as needed and a process for analyzing policies. Um, I did not send out this process uh, to the committee members because it's pretty, uh, in-depth. I mean, people get their PhDs in this stuff. Uh, so I wanted to go over our little analysis checklist, uh, during the meeting. Um, so I will probably send that out either the day of the meeting or a couple of days, uh, before, um, pending any questions, I will be followed by the next presenter.
Okay, thank you very much. MCST, so the MCST board and staff met on December fourteenth. Just a few things we did. The most important thing was a presentation of the, uh, CNA and medical sciences program and, uh, just remarkably important program for both students and our community. So they do a great job there in that kind of training and very much in demand. Um, but again, students and community folks who need that, that kind of help. Um, let's see. What's next? All right. So next on the agenda for readjourned is workshop planning.
Um, Lauren, can I just interrupt for a second? We need, we need to schedule a facilities meeting. So can you just remind us what the, uh, who's leading that and when, when, when we plan on doing that?
You and Gerald Wyman.
Okay.
And so what you want to do is call a meeting sort of like to organize what we're going to do next because we need to decide. Uh, the staff folks who need to be involved as well as think of community members who want to invite. Um, and Jesse's on the committee as well. So Jesse and Max and John. Uh, yourself and Gerald and, and me to meet very soon to do an organizational thing like that. That makes sense, Paul?
Yeah, it does. So are you asking me to schedule the meeting?
Right.
Good, right.
You know, Max is your, is your staff person, self-contact and person on this.
It would be in the third week of the month, Paul. Um, so if you try to find a time, third week of the month, that would be optimal.
And, uh, okay. I will work with Kathy, I believe, to schedule it. But I'll communicate with Gerald first.
Yeah, yeah. Cause again, you guys are leading this together. So we on the same page with him and then, you know, come to us with a, you know, pro- projected time, the best time to meet. See if we all can do it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, okay. So workshop planning, so the meeting in February is going to be a budget primer. And that's a meeting to, uh, describe the budget process that we follow every spring. As well as sort of like laying out, um, uh, what we're looking at so far. I'm actually that with John. And that is something, you know, we do every February, I hope, which is a, a budget primer meeting because for those of us who've been around for a while, it's good to re- reminded. Those of us who are new, good to see how this process works from beginning to end, which is the vote in June by the public. The meeting in January is going to be an SEL primer, same idea. Uh, of our staff describing to us the social emotional learning programs that we have by major grade level. Or primary school, middle school and high school. Um, for all of us to understand what we're offering in terms of the areas of social emotional learning that we're doing. Our philosophy and to be able to have a good conversation, be able to ask questions um, about that, uh, and to really have a great conversation after the review of what we're doing. That meeting is scheduled for the nineteenth of January, but here's, excuse me, my question to all of you, would it be possible? Is it, well, first of all, you, you know, uh, Stephanie and Janet are in a graduate school program. And their Thursday nights are just classes. That's not going to change for a long, long time. That's why we're meeting Wednesday nights here. I think with many of our workshops, we need them involved with them too, like this one, social emotional learning. We need those two involved as well. Um, so I'm wondering if, if it worked for us to meet um, monthly for our workshop on the third Wednesday instead of the third Thursday. That'd be possible to do because there are many times when we need them involved. Does that work for people and their schedules?
What time does that start? On a Wednesday, what time, would that be a six thirty start?
It's a six thirty start from what we have planned now. Yeah.
What did you say again? The third Wednesday?
I, I am saying third Wednesday at, um, six thirty, but Carol, I see you shaking your head.
Wednesdays are awful for me. But I don't know whether I'm going to be in the hospital or I'm going to be out or what's going to happen. So plan around, plan around and I'll come if I can.
Okay.
And is this, is this a monthly, every two months?
It is a monthly meeting. It's the third. Like in this, this case, we the third Wednesday of the month. The first Wednesday is our business meeting like tonight where we go through business items and then the third Wednesday is the workshop. Uh, it has been what Thursdays before doing Wednesday, hopefully because, uh, we need a time to really dive deep into certain uh, subjects and issues and things going on in our school district.
Yeah.
Like since we have in our goals this year to talk about school starts time, school start times. And I think our March workshop could be a discussion about, about that as well. So.
Um, I have, that's the third Wednesday is, uh, my board meeting at work.
Oh, it's your board meeting. Yeah, that's kind of tough.
But it doesn't, it usually doesn't go. It usually gets out at six. So I, I think it could probably work. Okay.
Long day for you, but it could work. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that too.
How about February, Lauren? Do we need to have Janet and Stephanie at the budget primer?
We don't. Uh, it's just typically better to sort of, you know, um, formalize on a, on a, on a day of the month that, that we're going to always have these meetings that often.
Suggesting that we're now going to switch our budget, our, our, um, workshops permanently to Wednesdays?
I think we should. I do think we should. If we can, I think we should. Yeah.
Well.
I'm feeling a little guilty, Lauren. I have to be honest. I'm sorry. I want to speak up because you're mentioning changing it for Janet and I. I know that there was a conversation at the beginning of the year of leaving it on Thursdays for the workshop days and that everybody was in agreement with that. I can't make a promise that I have uh, the, the second or third Wednesday of every month available. So I don't want you to switch it for me and then I I may or may not be available. My nights are pretty booked as well. So I, I just want to put that in there. I, I was a little surprised by the conversation. So my apologies.
I know, no, and, and it's, um, it, it's just a, it's just a matter of fact that we're often need you guys, uh, at a workshop as well, not just the business meeting and it's a matter of fact that you guys are in your classes on Thursday nights. And so uh, that's what I'm saying is that, um, if we can make the change, I just think it's better. Uh, uh, if all of us could be like if two folks on the board had other meetings every third Wednesday. We couldn't do it, right? We wouldn't be doing Wednesday, right? So if it, it can work, you know, Carol, I, I know what you're saying. You're saying it's difficult. Um, but I'm wondering if.
I've altered things to the point that I can do the first Wednesday of the month. But I can't cut in half my other commitment on a permanent basis because I'm either half here or half there.
Okay. Well, uh,
I used to, I wouldn't do that. Which is why I agreed to the other one.
Yep, yep. I just realized like when, you know, we're going to have this meeting on, on SEL. Uh, we need to have those folks there, but I'll talk, Carol, let, let's talk you and I. I would like to explore your, 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 your thoughts and concerns more if I could. Um, you know, you and I talk about that, but let's.
I can't do two Wednesdays in a month.
Okay.
Can't do it.
Well, let's at least do January. Uh, so.
And I'll do.
January eighteenth. And we're going to again, talk about SEL. And so bring, bring your thinking caps to that meeting. Um, in terms of what you want to learn, what you want to know and to go deep with our staff as to exactly what these programs are doing. What they aim to be doing. Um, we have a responsibility. I know our staff feels it too, from their point of view of measuring. Um, you know, having some sort of data points on SEL. And so whatever we can talk about there and we can do. I mean, there's some things we can measure, some things we can't. You know, but, uh, in any way that we can take a look at that as well. Brad.
Uh, Lauren, I'm sorry. I won't be able to be here on the eighteenth. I'm actually doing some strategic planning for another school district out of state. On the eighteenth, I was planning on being back by the nineteenth for that. So I'm sorry, but I've already booked my airfare for that, air travel for that. I'm not going to be able to be here on the eighteenth. Every other Wednesday, I'll be able to be here.
Okay. All right.
I could also, I'm, I'm out of town on the eighteenth. I was, I can do a Zoom, but I can't be in, in person and I was going to be back on the nineteenth.
Oh, okay. Well. All right, um.
But otherwise, I guess Wednesdays would work for me.
Okay. Um, John, what do you think? I think we should. Do you think you can get enough info from, uh?
So to, uh, I have a couple of thoughts. I can, I can do an overview of SEL. That's not a problem. Um, I'm not sure when you say deep, I'm not sure how deep we're going to go in terms of data that we could provide.
Doesn't need to be data. I mean, like either we have it or we don't, right? It's deep in terms of what is this like second step? What really is it? What really does it do? In what grade levels, that kind of thing.
But as far as scheduling goes, I guess you know, everybody's got a busy life other than school board, except for me. I don't have a life. Um, I'm at your beck and call pretty much. So I'll be there, but, um, I mean, I think it's going to be difficult, if not impossible to, to schedule a workshop that everybody can go to every single time. I think the best we can do is kind of try to, try to accommodate to the extent that we can. And I, I definitely hear Carol when she says you know, she can't do that two Wednesdays a month. Everybody's got a commitment of one kind or another, except for me. Um, so you know, it may be Lauren that we on a, for a workshop, we may have to think about, um, flex, being flexible. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Well, these next two are really important that people be able to participate in because you're going to learn a heck of a lot and you want to, you want to know what you, we need to know. Uh, we need everybody, um, there. So um, I'm going to think out loud and, and I'm going to wonder about the twenty-fourth. It's a Tuesday of January. I wonder out loud about people and their commitments on that date. The duel.
I could do.
Jason, you're shaking, you're shaking head. No.
I could.
No, I've got a, I've got a class that day. And, and at that time, it's at six.
Okay.
I, I cannot make that date. I apologize.
How about Wednesday, the twenty-fifth?
Again, a Wednesday.
I know.
Yeah, I could do. I can't do that.
Into them.
Lauren, I have a thought. What if we, um, I mean, for, if, if a member can't make it, they just can't make it. I mean, there's no two around that. So what if we just record it? And then have it available for folks to watch if they want to watch it. Cause I hear you when you want, you know, everybody there, but that may not be possible.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
Well, the workshops work because we're in the same space and we're able to discuss things and ask pertinent questions. And so for me, yeah, I can watch it and I'm not unaware of what, um, SEO is. And I know how the budget works, but I think it's more important for the newer members, but I like to be there. I don't like to you know, be AWOL from these meetings.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry. It's just a suggestion. What if we did a doodle poll? Um, for three or four nights. Around that period and.
Doodle poll.
What's that?
Oh, um, you get a, you get an email and then you go to the, the site. It's made by the folks at Doodle. Um, and, um, you, there's a bunch of dates and times of, I mean, you click. Um, and um, you, there's a bunch of dates and times of, I mean, you click the ones you can make. And then the administrator of the doodle poll then looks at that and tries to figure out the, the best date and time.
Sounds like a good plan.
Well. Okay, we'll do that. We'll try to find time in January. We'll try to figure something out. It's just that important, you know? There are other things we're gonna talk about at workshops. And if a couple of us can't make it, you know, I don't think it's gonna be, but this is so important, like this one and the budget one, they're really important. All right, so John and I will organize a doodle poll on that to try to figure out time in January when we can meet. And if we have to go back to that Thursday, the nineteenth, that's what we're gonna do. Let's figure out who for staff should be there to explain like second step. The bar program. Uh, restorative practices, anything, you know, we just, we just all need to know what we're doing because. It being the second pillar of our district, you know, academic learning is one and the other is social emotional learning. We as a board just need to be as aware as we can be and should be. Of what we have for programming and what it means. I, I also have certain thoughts I really want to share with all of you uh, from a lot of research. I'd like to do that, too. So um, we'll do a doodle poll and try to figure that out and thank you for indulging in conversation and trying to make that work.
Um.
Lauren, can I, I interject on um? That meeting, um, I think we've heard from a number of the schools who presented. Um, mainly, I think around the lower grades on how they're implementing social and emotional. Health along with academia. Um, and at that workshop meeting, I'd like to hear a little more at the middle school and high school level. How the students or how the teachers integrate, you know, the academia with the social, emotional learning. If we have some good data or some examples um, for that age group. Um, because I've heard from some teachers that um, it's really difficult to, to integrate. And I know you great, uh, showed a great video, I think it was at our last meeting or the meeting before, um. About how, how important social, emotional health is. Um, so I just would like to see a little bit more examples for the upper grades.
Exactly, and that's why I, I've asked John already to look at that, look at it presenting to us in terms of primary schools. The middle school and the high school, because developmentally, there are just three different, well, you know, groups of students that we're working with, so.
So, just so I'm clear, so now are we talking about me trying to get? High school and middle school staff or admin to attend?
That's up to you. It's like entirely what you think is best to educate us about what we have for S E L in the district and. And how it's working. I mean, it's a. Again, it's, it's the second pillar of our district, so we as a board really want to be aware of what's going on and how, how it's going. Uh, Gillian?
Um, is there any way that? The students can also help with these workshops? Because how? Our points of view is something that's real important. Um, so I don't know if that's possible to like also add us to those workshops.
Four hundred percent. Yeah, absolutely.
Something that I would definitely be willing to do. Um, and if you want to bring different kids also into those, like different perspectives. Um, I think that would be something really good for. Everyone to see as well.
Okay, if. If you and Winter like. Look at things and you maybe work with Jesse, your principal. If there are some students who want to come and get, give us perspectives on. How things are working, um. That would be great. You know, to, to hear you and to hear. Uh. Your perspectives on things are just unbelievably valuable to us, yeah.
Yeah, so my question was, um. I'm obviously new to this, so I don't know like what things. Where's like what workshops we should go do, things like that, so. Someone could like email Winter and I and we could work on that. That would be really great because.
Great.
I'll connect, I'll connect up with Gillian, with you.
What I want you both to know in terms of you and your lives and school and everything is like you're not required. As much to go to the workshop, you know, it's entirely optional as to what works in your life. We'd love to have you at every meeting we have like that, but. We also recognize if something's going on and it's just, you know, too much to do. All right, so please know you're invited to everything that we do. John will get you on the list to know about them. Um, because we would love to always hear your perspectives. Okay.
Just a logistical question, um, or kind of request moving forward, um. So this is the second time I've experienced the schedule getting changed of our calendar at the meeting of the month that we're having the meeting. And that feels like. Not always the most advantageous way to get everybody to be able to do it. So I'm wondering if I can make a request that in the future, if you need to do that, if you could give us a month in advance.
Okay.
Possible, because this way create feels a lot more, um. Uh, less flexibility is possible and people have already set their schedule to the meetings that we've already agreed on and that's not okay to me.
Okay, yep. Yeah, all right, okay, that's a good point and I will do that. And I really don't ever want to make any changes. Um, uh, because when we get used to things, we may get stuck in our minds and that's a good thing. But sometimes we just need to look at making it. It's just, it just goes that way, but um. More lead time obviously is a really good point. And uh, like I said, for this month, uh. If the doodle poll doesn't work, because it's really even hard to do that, but we're just gonna go the nineteenth, that Thursday, which is already planned. It's just, so keep that in your schedules, everybody. It's like a very likely date when we're gonna meet this week and talk about S E L. Okay, keep in your schedules, but we'll do a doodle poll anyway. Anything else on this? Seeing none, then. Mark with your remarkably deep voice, uh, this month, this time around. Thank you for your. Uh, motion uh, to uh, to adjourn and for Sarah for second that and the superintendent will call a roll.
All right, Lauren Andrews?
Yes.
Carol Bachofner?
Yes.
Brad Hoyt?
Yes.
Paul Costa?
Yes.
Jesse Davis?
Yes.
Mark Lewis?
Yes.
Kelly McCannell?
Yes.
Theraposts?
Yes.
Rebecca Rovetto?
Yes.
Ethan White?
Yes.
Uh, Winter?
Yes.
And Gillian?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you all. Have a good night. Rest of the month. See you when we see you in late, later January. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thanks all.